Good evening, everybody. Hello, hello. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Peter Lindstrom, and I am a Met Council member for District 10. And I have the pleasure of chairing the Environment Committee. And so I'd like to welcome you today to this fantastic facility. And I think this might be the first time I've been here. And how cool is it that we can have a public hearing and watch that open skating at the same time? Maybe we should adjourn here and re-adjourn out on the ring and hold our public hearing with skates on? How cool would that be? Well, welcome again for the presentation, the public hearing tonight. We've got a bunch of rock stars from Met Council Environmental Services with us today, but I'd like to call out just a few of them. We have Pratasha right here, who's an information specialist, and Mark Lundgren, one of our engineers, and Ryan, Ryan back there. It's going to be presenting one of our engineers as well, Ryan Piner. So I would also like to welcome a Rogers Council member. Right, and two Rogers, Roger Council members. Thank you so much for joining us today. Really appreciate your attendance and hearing what this is all about. So I would like to call the public meeting to order, and we're going to start off by saying the subject of this public hearing is the Environmental Services Draft Facility Plan. And this plan outlines our recommendations for the Crow River Water Resource Recovery Facility and Interceptor. The purpose of this hearing is to provide a project summary, explain the various alternatives that we considered and evaluated, and answer any questions that you have, and most importantly, listen to what you have to say about the project. So we are recording this meeting this evening, and the transcript and video recording of the presentation will be posted on the project website in a week or two. So as we conduct this public hearing, there's just a couple of things that I want to point out. Anyone who wishes will be allowed to provide public comments. If you wish to speak this evening, but if you have not signed in, please take a moment to sign in over there, and we'll go by first come, first served. And I'd ask that you state your name and spell your name when you start to speak. Also include your address and any organization you represent, if any. And we'll allow three minutes for folks to speak, or five minutes if you are part or representing an organization. We also welcome any written comments that you may have, and I'll go over some instructions on how to submit those. And we also will read into the public record any comments we have received prior to tonight's public hearing. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Pratasha.
Thank you, Councilmember Lindstrom. My name is Pratasha. I work for the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services Division. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm here to provide a brief overview of the Metropolitan Council, our regional wastewater system and service area, plant facilities. After that, our project team will provide an update about the planned Crow River facility. The Metropolitan Council is a regional policymaking body and planning agency. We provide essential services in the seven-county Twin Cities metro area. The regional wastewater system is run by Environmental Services. It's an operating division of the Met Council. This is a map of the seven-county Twin Cities metropolitan area. It is shown in our wastewater service area and regional sanitary sewer facilities. The color shading on the map shows the areas we serve. It's above 50% of the state's population. Each color shaded area corresponds to one of our regional wastewater treatment facilities. Our wastewater system consists of approximately 640 miles of interceptors, 61 pump stations, and over 200 meter stations. These sewers intercept the flow of wastewater from one of our 111 communities in the metro area and carry it to our nine water resource recovery facilities that you can see here. In addition, our communities operate more than 5,000 miles of local sanitary sewer pipes. The icons on the map indicate our nine resource recovery facilities. They treat approximately 250 million gallons of wastewater each day and discharge the clean water to the Mississippi, Minnesota, and San Jose rivers. To put this into perspective, 250 million gallons would easily fill the Empire State Building each day. We're often asked how the Met Council finances the regional wastewater system. We bill the communities connected to the system to pay for our operation, maintenance, and capital improvement costs. The cities, in turn, bill these costs and their local costs to property owners connected to their lower, their local sewer systems. Sorry, the page is turning. About 60% of the sewer bill pays regional system costs, and about 40% stays in your community to pay for your local sewer system costs. The user fees that we collect are enough to fund our regional wastewater system without the need for tax dollars. We also do not levy special assessments on properties near projects like we are discussing tonight. The projects have a broader public benefit, and so their costs are paid for region-wide. The next slide, sorry. No, I think I'm, so that was, you know, just a summary of the Met Council and what we do. We're going to move the facility plan, I think. We're, yeah, we're moving on to the project, but before that, I just wanted to provide a brief summary of what a facility plan is. It is a prerequisite for a portion of the financing on environmental services projects. It summarizes the current state of the existing wastewater sewer system. It identifies the need for improving existing facilities, determines the potential environmental impacts of the facilities, and recommends a course of action. For the last several weeks, a paper copy of the draft facility plan for this project has been available for the public to review at the Hennepin County Library in Rogers and the Roger City Hall. An electronic copy of the draft facility plan is available on our project website, on the council website. We'll continue to have the facility plan available for review through January 18, 2025, which is the end of the public comment period. On the screen, you can see the various ways, I think we switched over, so that's the, sorry, the slides. So this is the various ways that you can provide the comments on the draft facility plan. And now the project.
You said Pratasha, like the wonderful introduction. Just gonna move this over here. All right, I'm Mark Lundgren. I'm a principal engineer in capital planning for the plants. I work on large capital projects, and I will be kind of walking you through the facility plan and some of our recommendations. And then I'll have Ryan Piner, my counterpart on the interceptor engineering, come up and walk you through the interceptor sewer pipeline. So just to give you a little bit of background on how this all came about, we have been working with the city of Rogers since about 2000. This started to become a concept. We've had this officially in our Water Resources Policy Plan in both the 2030 and 2040 Plan, and that's kind of our plan that outlines what we as the Council Environmental Services are planning for the next five, 10-year cycles. And so a vision for a regional facility has been in the works for almost 25 years now. And so we kind of started formalizing this commitment to building a reasonable facility in Rogers in 2019. And that kind of was formalized with the acquisition agreement for the existing Waters wastewater treatment facility. And in that agreement, we made a commitment to the city to initiate operations of the new Crow River Water Resource Recovery Facility by 2030, and then return the unused portion of the existing treatment facility back to the city. We are planning on putting a lift station there to transfer the flow, but the rest of that plan will be returned to the city. And so that acquisition agreement, we worked with the city hand in hand from 2019 to 2020 to kind of get a feel for the plant, and we took over operations of 2020. And now we are working towards designing construction of the new facility as we speak. And this facility plan is the first step in that kind of process of getting a new facility built. So somewhat kind of larger rationale for why we're doing this, you know, Rogers and the surrounding communities have been a real hotbed of growth, especially through 2000 to 2010. I think you were one of the top five fastest-growing cities in the whole country. So this has really been an area of strong growth. You know, another one of our jobs is looking at comprehensive planning, and the most recent comprehensive plans, we took into consideration the growth in this area, and it really supports the need for getting out of that site in downtown Rogers, moving to a larger regional facility that's going to be able to handle the orderly and economic growth of the communities in the area. So we looked at, you know, we take a system-wide approach. We looked at, you know, what was the most efficient and economic way to meet the needs of the communities, and a regional facility in Rogers really was the right choice. And of course, we will continue to protect the Crow River and meet all of the environmental requirements as the current facility has done successfully for many years. Just at a very high level, our plan, as I mentioned, was to build a lift station on the existing wastewater treatment site, and that's just a fancy name for some pump station. So we've got some pumps, and then we have to pump the wastewater over to the new facility. That'll be a much smaller footprint on that existing site. And then we will work to decommission that facility and clean it up and return it to the city while building the new facility on that site. So the initial flow, we're looking at about 3 million gallons a day for the capacity. Right now, the city is putting about 1 million gallons per day. So, you know, we're building enough capacity into the new facility to just about triple the growth in the existing service area and that plan for some of those other communities to come online. And then our ultimate vision for the site is that we could handle up to 16.5 million gallons per day. So that's a very big increase from what you're currently sending to the treatment facility. But, you know, based on what the cities have submitted to us for kind of long-term visions for how their growth is going to go, we wanted to make sure that we left enough space and capacity to fully realize your amazing growth in this area. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Piner, and he's going to tell you a little bit about the plans for the interceptor.
Thank you, Mark. So as we said, we need to get the existing sewer from the wastewater treatment point that exists over to the new one. So we looked at the area and analyzed several routes. For in particular, we reviewed for environmental concerns, cultural resources, cost, and operational needs for the Met Council. And after all that, our preferred route is the dark blue route going on the one side of 94, under it, and down 140, 141st Avenue. And that route has now gone through tribal review.
Yep.
Yep. So overview, we've submitted blown up, so you can kind of see where we're talking about here. What happened to the cultural resources?
That's that, you're on.
But, okay, so we've gone to the cultural resources.
There we are.
Oh, oh, sorry. So that route was, there are 11 tribes in Minnesota. We completed this, we submitted this alignment to them and completed a Phase One archaeological survey, and we did shovel testing on the site. That was completed in July 2024. There was nothing discovered, and no new sites identified. So they didn't have any additional comments, but will be involved during our design. Jeff goes through that, now Mark can talk.
Yeah, thank you, Grant. Appreciate that. Yes. So I will speak now a little bit about the plant. So this is the Per Council, the property that was purchased by the Council for the new treatment plant. This was purchased back in 2016 from Norbert Patricia Russell. We had a lovely time working with them. They're very, very accommodating, lovely family. They've been farming there for almost 80 years, so it's bittersweet to have her move out. But she, I think we were able to work very collaboratively, so we much appreciated that. Our plan for this area is really to focus the development of the new plant site on the south here. And so just in terms of what else is out there, if you know the area, we've got the Crow Hasen Park to the west, and then we've got some farm parcels to the east. We are in the process of working collaboratively with the Three Rivers Park District to determine what's going to go ultimately on the northern side of the parcel. We are hoping to return a lot of that to the more natural state and do some conservation practices up there. There are three reverse parks, long-term vision for that parcel, as well as many of the parcels to east is to build a regional bike path that will connect down to downtown Rogers. We are certainly supportive of trying to find a way to work with them to make, to realize that vision. And we're also, you know, we have more than enough land area to build the facility. So this is kind of just generally how we're planning on laying out the new facility on that parcel. It's kind of hard to see, but the black boxes up here are kind of what's going to go in first. And so just the general way that a treatment plant works, you have influent coming into a headworks, and that kind of takes out the kind of the big chunks, if you will, the grit and other things that can be screened out easily through mechanical means. And then you go into the heart of the plant, which is the biological process. These are the aeration tanks, and we're going to have just three of those initially. You go to the clarifiers, which then kind of takes out that, those more finer particulates, as well as some of the biological material. Those solids are then transferred to the solids handling facilities. And then the liquid train then goes through a disaffection, and we'll have effluent filters on there, which will be, I think, the second council facility to have effluent filters. We are going to be achieving some of the lowest nutrients limits at this facility for any of our council facilities, so we're excited about that. And then out to the Crow River through outfall across the northern parcel. And then I'll just point out that then all of these kind of dashed line boxes, those are the facilities that we are planning for, both in terms of meeting that 16.5 million gallon per day ultimate capacity, but also for facilities that will meet the future needs of the region in terms of potential wastewater reuse opportunities of businesses or some other entity is looking for a wastewater reuse. We have sites reserved for an RO facility, and that will also double in case we ever have to get into kind of ultra-advanced treatment, for example, P-bots or sulfate, which is not required now. We also have space for future solids processing on the site as well. So we're, we fit comfortably on this southern parcel. We're pretty confident that that's where all the facilities will end up being built. So now I'm just going to kind of talk about some of the recommendations for the processes that we'll have within the plants, as I mentioned. Headworks is kind of where we take out the, take out the large kind of screenable things. We have influents coming in. We have screens that are, you know, you can basically just think of, you know, large bars that get raked and all the large solid particles that will be affecting downstream are taken out. We have grit, which is more for like sand particles, and that's kind of a cyclone thing that will be running. And then we take all those solid particles out there. That kind of protects the downstream processes. So part of the, the main part of a facility plan, at least from our standpoint, is that we review alternatives. And so for each of our unit processes, we looked at a variety of alternatives. And we did what's called a net present value analysis, and this looks at the operation and maintenance as well as the capital costs. And then it also takes into consideration things like, you know, the user experience, as well as the, you know, sustainability impacts of, excuse me, sustainability impacts of the unit processes. So for each alternative, we went through a variety of different alternatives for the screen. You know, we looked at three different alternatives and decided on a multi-rake for influent pumping. We went with a wet well, dry well configuration. And this may not mean a lot to the general public, but we just wanted to kind of show that, you know, we do our due diligence in terms of looking after the capital and the public trust in our budgeting. So that's kind of the idea with the headworks. So as I mentioned, the liquid train analysis alternatives, this is, again, fairly technical. But, you know, the main takeaway from this slide is that we are, we are taking kind of a phased approach to our treatment. Our, the main recommendation that we went with was is an AO process, and that's an anaerobic toxic process that utilizes biological functioning to remove nutrients in terms of its ability to, you know, utilize biology rather than filters. It's a great energy saver, and if we can get a biological process to remove nutrients, it's always preferable from an energy and sustainability standpoint. So as, as the plant kind of grows, you know, we're going to start out on pathway one. And the idea is, is that, you know, we can move to lower treatment levels. You know, we're planning for, when we get a lower nitrogen level, we have a plan for moving, moving down, you know, when we get maybe even a lower phosphorus limit, we have a plan for that. And then if we were ever to get, you know, chlorides or P-bots that we have to remove, we have a plan for that. And so as, as, you know, future requirements cause us to go kind of more intensive on the treatment side, we have a plan, and we've got kind of a pathway laid out. But, you know, to start, we're going to be, we're going to be up on that pathway one, which is the recommended pathway for, for treatment. And just kind of generally how, how that's going to work. After we get through the headworks, we're going to go to anaerobic tank, and that's just kind of means no oxygen. And what that does is it kind of tricks the bacteria into taking up phosphorus into the cells. Then we're able to capture those bacteria and get the phosphorus out of the waste stream. And it's kind of a neat little trick that we've learned over many years of wastewater treatment that we can get nutrients out that way. But that's, you know, generally the flow stream. I won't go into too much more detail unless you have specific questions. And then, you know, the other big thing that we think about in terms of wastewater treatment is the solids. So once we get all those bugs out of the process with those nutrients, we worry about what we're going to do with them, because you, you know, you have to, you have to dispose of them somehow. So we looked at a variety of alternatives. We considered hauling solids out of the plants in liquid form down to the Metropolitan Wastewater or Water Resource Recovery Facility. We screened those out. This is one of our furthest plants, that's furthest away from the metro plant. If you look at our service area map, the rest of the plants that haul solids are within 20 miles. And we just, from a public safety standpoint, as well as a driver safety standpoint, we decided from a level of service commitment that we really didn't want to ask our employees to truck that far. So we kind of screened those out from consideration, and then we looked at two other alternatives. And the alternative that we decided to go for was onsite long-term storage. So once a year, we'll be looking at contracting out thickening of the solids at that disposal, either through land application or landfilling through a contract service. And we ultimately felt that that was the most sustainable solution, especially on this first iteration of the facility. So just kind of what that, that looks like. We've got aerated storage, which will be covered, will have a sort of a 3% stabilized sludge, which will then get dewatered, and then set to a loading station where it can be ultimately disposed of. And then, and then finally, we've got disinfection and filtration. We are going to be doing UV disinfection on site. The other alternative looked at is sodium hypochlorite. And just for ease of use and sort of operational friendliness, we went with UV. And then in terms of filters, we're going to be making a cloth filter unit. Yeah, so that's kind of the unit processes part of the facility. But, you know, a facility has a lot of other components besides just wastewater. We like to dork out on the wastewater stuff, but, you know, I think a lot of what the public interest is is sort of the other things. We are going to be achieving a sustainability standards in our, in our buildings that we put on site, building benchmarks and beyond, or kind of B3 sustainability goals. We're going to be achieving those. It's a statewide program. We're going to be putting in kind of energy and carbon-efficient processes, including high-efficiency blowers, building automation systems, you know, the kind of things that turn the lights on and off. Obviously, LED lighting, the kinds of things that are pretty standard these days. We're also going to be looking at decarbonized HVAC systems and affluent heat recovery, as well as air-water source heat pumps to get some more energy back. We're going to be installing a Tier Four generator for Excel's load deferment program, as well as utilizing sustainable landscaping. So we were really hoping that, especially on this site, that it's, you know, it's a lovely, lovely portion of the city out there, the lovely portion of the region. I certainly enjoy Crow Hasen, and our goal is really to make our facility kind of fade into the background. So we're going to be taking our kind of sustainable landscaping implementation fairly seriously in this plant. Also, of course, doing, doing our best to implement stormwater BMPs in terms of infiltration, the basins, rain gardens, perginal pavers, and that kind of thing. And then the other Um and then the other uh kind of uh major push that the council has been making in in recent years is through uh looking at opportunities to reuse wastewater. And we're we're gonna be looking at 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 kind of two different ways, both in terms of implant and offsite. Uh implant, uh we'll be looking at utilizing uh treated wastewater for things like flushing toilets. Landscape irrigation, make up water for any processes that may need it. Dust abatement, concrete mixing, fiber protection and so on. And then uh offsite, you know, we're not uh quite there in terms of uh of finding the the users in this area. But uh we are definitely planning for a future when. Uh uh you know, the communities come to us and and look to be utilizing our uh treated wastewater for uh. You know, potential uh residential industrial applications, so. We're we're getting ready, and when that comes, I think we will be ready. Uh in terms of how much is this is gonna cost, uh we have an opinion of probable cost for you, the uh interceptor force pain portion is gonna be about. Twenty-eight million, and then the 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 full project uh is gonna be about a hundred and eighty-two million. Uh and then uh how is that gonna uh impact you in terms of of rates, uh? You know, as as I think for talk should mention earlier, we are a a user fee based organization, we don't levy taxes, um connect. Uh project funding will will be through the 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 public facilities authority or the P F A loans, which are twenty-year loans that are given to water wastewater projects. Uh the the loans are paid through two different sources, municipal wastewater charge. Which is the M C S portion of your silver sewer bill and the sewer availability or sack charge, this is a one-time charge for new connections. About how that will impact uh rates. Uh you know, a hundred and eighty-two million dollars will translate into a five dollar. Uh increase on your uh sewer bill or about uh two hundred and forty-two dollars per year, and then. The 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 uh one-time sack charge will go off about uh two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um so uh I think that is about the end of my formal presentation, um I. Leave that, I will invite uh council member Lindstrom back up to open the official public comment period.
I would like to open the official comment period, thank you so much, uh Mark Ryan Prodaksha for this informative. Presentation and uh just a friendly reminder, if you do have any comments, to state your name and address and. We'll keep it to three minutes, but yeah, let's uh call the call the meeting in order and um is there anybody? That wishes to have any public comments? Well.
Hi, I'm Joey Rodriguez, J O E Y R O D R I G U E Z, I live in two one nine oh nine El Parkway. Um I am here uh to voice my concern uh to the community because of a. Wastewater treatment that's gonna be next to a Three Rivers Regional Park. Uh I'm not against having a new facility, but why would you put a facility next to a park? And why would it go to the Crow River as opposed to the Mississippi River? And I know some of those questions or answers for that question is uh cost. Um what is the cost to have the environment look as it is for future generations like my daughters? How is the Crow River gonna look? After how many gallons of water are flowed into, that's treated, but how many gallons of water can be? Having the Crow River look after that, is it gonna change the way it's gonna flow, of course? Water flows on its easiest, uh there's a lot of turns on the Crow River. And how is that gonna impact the banks? Not just in our area, but the banks of the river going down further, from what I see on the map. How the river flows is almost as big as Rogers. And. That's something that I take to heart, uh as I served in Afghanistan, we are stationed next to a sewage. Or water treatment plant, and I still have health cons- health uh problem because of that. And I would hate for anything like that to happen to my kids, now everything I know is not perfect, uh. But that's just some of the concerns I have. Uh and I know we do need to have our water treated, and this is a great plan, but. I would say adjustments to take care of our environment, uh. And I think that even if it's a little more cost to go through the Mississippi. I would I would not hesitate to pay even more, but then ten dollars more to do that, uh because of such a little community here. Um and a couple of questions I have here is. It's a regional water treatment, are we be treating water from landfills? How much P F O S percentage is coming out, I know we don't treat P F O S here currently, but. Are we gonna be treating that, it's just one step more, like we we're gonna build a plant. We're gonna do that, what else are they gonna do further down, is it gonna be more plants on the Crow River? Uh this is step one, and hopefully we can get it right. And have the the future of our kids see a nice river or not see. Who knows what kind of what birds or whatever live on the Crow River now, and hopefully we don't impact them as much, and uh that's my two cents.
Thank you so much, uh Mr. Rodriguez. And as we had, uh uh we'll have Mark address those questions about. Uh why this particular location next to this park, the location that's has been selected. Uh what impacts that they will have with the existing Crow River? And are we gonna be taking the sort of leachate uh from area of landfills? Uh and are there any more plans or other ones? Um along the the bit, hopefully I got them all, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Lindstrom, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, uh for your questions. Um in terms of the environmental impacts to the uh Pro, uh. Uh you know, right now, the the flow that the city is currently collecting goes to the river uh at a site that is. Pretty close to the current location, we are essentially taking that existing flow, uh moving it, you know, two miles upstream. And we'll be treating it to a a higher quality, so uh we certainly anticipate the. Water corollary of the Crow, uh if if anything to increase. Uh from what it is now, so it's just gonna be of of higher quality, the treatment level is gonna be significantly higher with the the new filters. Uh and you know, uh in in terms of how the 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 regulations that we are required to to meet are, you know. You know, we are gonna be uh returning water that is is cleaner than uh currently is in the crow, so the crow. Especially is is impacted by a lot of uh upstream runoff from agricultural resources. And we have, you know, certainly anticipate that they will be. Uh more impactful in uh integrating the club, uh you know, the will actually contribute to water of higher quality. That is currently in in the river. Uh and then in terms of the the leachate question, uh uh we will not be accepting landfill leachate, that's, you know, they they treat that. At the landfill, it does not come to us, and we will not have a the uh loading station for that or for anything like that, so we will not take that. Um and then uh the third question, uh will there be any other additional uh treatment plants on the Crow? Uh in terms of M C S, my council, we do not have any plans for additional uh council facilities on the Crow. Uh uh there are obviously other city treatment plants that are uh further down. Um they will be uh complying with the same uh new lower limits that we are, so we anticipate. At at least with the wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant portion. Of the uh discharges to the crow will be in in improving. Over the coming years as they meet these new regulations, especially for phosphorus, but again, that is outside the council's purview. So I hope I, is is there any other questions?
Yes, Paul, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh I got one more quick.
Yeah, of course.
Uh if you guys do the study where like the flow of the river is, it's gonna change with how many more gallons?
Um yeah, so uh.
Big question.
Yeah, so uh the the question was, thank you, Peter, um the the question was, uh will uh. Uh flow of the river change uh based on the uh addition of of uh. Uh the gallons, yeah, so uh a- as I mentioned earlier, uh all of the the water that is currently. Uh uh be discharged into the existing plant will just be moved slightly upstream. Uh. Uh in terms of, uh you know, volume metric, uh is issues that are caused in the river and the riverbank erosion. Uh again, that is that is more due to farming than it is to wastewater, wastewater is a very regular consistent flow. So it doesn't cause these giants of a kind of. Uh events that cause a wood riverbank destabilization, those are largely due, especially these days, due to uh. Uh uh kind of this this hydraulic flushing that happen and happens when you get a large storm event and you have. And cultural practices that kind of, you know, use things like tiling to to sh- shun a lot of water all at once into the river, then you get these kind of. Large hydraulic events that tend to erode riverbanks.
I have a question, though, you said it's equal to what you're doing now.
Yes.
But you're planning for expansion to sixteen and a half million, I think you said?
Mm-hmm.
Gallons, that will certainly change. Have, I mean, what you're talking, well, it will change the flow of the Crow River if you're, I mean, granted, that's gonna happen anyway with just. Heard, but it's, that's a lot of extra water being planned for for that river. And why it why on the pro party? Why, why was that site right there instead of move down to a farmer's field, for example, I mean, just question.
Yeah, so the question was, um. Why, why on that site?
Yeah.
And then, uh you know, are we planning for the. Uh additional, you know, ultimate buildout. So, you know, even at that higher flow, it's only gonna be a small portion of the river flow, I I can certainly. I I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I can definitely uh get back to you. And and let you know exactly, yeah, and let you know exactly what portion of the total flow of the river will be. Uh when we get to ultimate buildup. Uh and then in terms of why that parcel, uh you know, the the parcel was a farmer's field uh initially. And so we are taking, uh you know. In terms of its environmental impact, we will certainly be improving the environmental impact of the parcel. Uh from, you know, worthless farmland that, you know, frankly was farmed from buffer to buffer. Right up to the the edge of the crow, and if you look at. You know, if you go out there and look at the riverbanks, it it is, it is a highly eroded riverbank along that area, and you know, we would be concerned about. The runoff that was going into the river from there, we will be. Uh creating a a very large buffer zone uh in in conjunction with Three Rivers Park on the northern parcel. As well as planning for uh uh wildlife and other uh uses for that area. But particularly, that's going to decrease any runoff that may come off of that property going into the grow. We're also gonna be doing a a riverbank stabilization project. On that parcel that will make sure that any immediate impacts of of the hydrology. And again, if you look, the, you know, if you go over there, it's probably about a ten-foot uh berm down into the river, and it's just. And it's corroded right now, and what we will be addressing that.
Just uh. Note that um we'll be taking a really close look at. Both of your questions, and we will be posting on the project website some more concrete answers. When we really are able to sink our teeth into the numbers. If if Mark doesn't have it off the top of his.
No, no, yeah, I took that much of the computer, but tha- thank you, appreciate your questions.
And yeah, absolutely, and if uh you're looking on the project website and you still have additional questions, then. Uh there'll be ways to get, look at these, my folks. Additional questions, I see this one and then we'll. Oh, yeah, uh could could you state your, spell your name, please, thank you.
I'm Rita Holland, H O L L A N D, one four 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 five Starlight Drive. Wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Thank you. Uh my name is Mark Ellison, M A R K E L L I S O N. And I'm at two zero five eight zero one hundred forty-fifth Avenue North. And I've come and found a few questions here in the meantime, so. One question is, are you able to tell us the last water treatment plant that was built? Um when that was, and if you had any issues regarding environmental issues with any of these. Um uh facilities, and are you, are you monitored by federal or state? And then also, only because I golf at Fox Hollow, I know how much that river can rise.
Yeah.
It rose thirty feet this year, so what plans do you have in place? To allow for that type of, because the crow, you know, the crow comes down and just gets shoved into that small space, that's why anytime you get any water whatsoever, it just floods. All the farm field by a hundred and forty-first or by a hundred and sixty, whatever it was, yeah. So I mean, there's just a lot of water that runs in the fields, the water that river goes up thirty plus feet, so that's just my, what? What's the last one that's been built, have you had any issues, and just, I'm sure you have to have a plan in place for that river that rises as much as it does.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you so much for that question, uh. Terms of the last one that was built, uh we built the East Bethel facility most recently, um. That was uh a demonstration facility for us in a lot of ways, uh. We are actually doing groundwater recharge at that facility, so we're 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 quite proud of that, we we. Discharge to a uh kind of infiltration bed rather than directly to the river, uh. And uh in terms of environmental impacts, you know, we have uh our our nine wastewater treatment plants, uh you know, I think we celebrate every year. Our our, you know, years of perfect compliance, uh in in terms of our regulations, some of our facilities have got. Uh you know, over thirty years of perfect environmental compliance, so we're we we take our duty as environmental stewards very very seriously and. Uh you know, I think if if we would have had an issue, you would have heard about it, and we we like to stay out of the news as much as possible, so we. Try our best to be good stewards of the environment. Um in terms of uh your second question, uh let me just jump back to. Uh sites.
As you're doing that, Mark, could you provide us who we report to?
Oh, thank you, yes, yes.
State.
Yeah, so we report to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, they are the ones who issue us our permit. And it's a national pollution discharge elimination system, I think I got that right permit, uh and they uh. So we 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 send samples, uh you know, daily, monthly, quarterly, for a a whole brevity of uh pollutants. Uh and so we are constantly monitoring to make sure that our our processes are meeting the 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 highest standards set by the state agency. Um yeah, and then in terms of uh the crow going up and down, we are, we are certainly keenly aware of that, um. You know, if we've owned the site for uh since twenty sixteen, and we have seen the the rise and fall of the river. Uh part of what we are planning is um on this this northern parcel, which definitely floods. Um I think if you can kind of imagine a line going along here, um this is all in the the kind of normal flood plain. And it's really, this area up here is at a much higher elevation, and that's where we're going to be focusing our, all of our uh construction. This area right here is is also on a lower elevation, uh and we're going to be retaining that. Uh for a uh. Uh this is a runoff area and a stormwater retention pond as well as an infiltration basin, so we're gonna be utilizing that for some of our onsite stormwater management practices, but. Uh yes, we're definitely uh uh aware of the the flooding issues uh around there, so, but that, but thank you for that. Uh that comment, and in some of our other facilities, we do have to build up, um like our metro plant, which is. Uh constantly flooding, uh we have uh a a storm wall that we've built to to keep. Uh water from coming out, but we won't have to do that here. Did I, did I get everything? Other questions?
Other questions?
I'm a member. Bro rotten, B R O C K M A N, two four four three Superior Drive, here in Rogge. Uh one of the concerns I have is the amount of truck traffic. Solid waste is going to be coming out of this sewer. Right now, one forty point is ample truck traffic because of the mining operations down the rows. How much truck traffic will it be in the places? Second question I have is to do with the parkland over closest to the river. Your discharge pipe will be underground? And will it be able to be used as a resource over the top or the pond service?
Two great questions. Uh yeah, I could answer both of those. Uh yes, the the effluent pipe will be uh buried. And it will discharge under the river, so you really won't know it's there. Uh. Will will know it's in reality, but uh yeah, and so we, you know, it'll be buried in a a minimum of seven feet, which is, you know, below the frost barrier. I think. It's actually, there's quite an elevation drop, so I I don't have the exact elevation on me, but yeah, it will definitely be buried. Uh and uh yes, the park will be able to utilize uh, you know, we're we're going to be, we'll we'll. Maintain a at at minimum easement uh over the pipe in case we need to do. Uh emergency repairs, you know, obviously it's important to pack up people sewers. Uh so that that will be a priority for the council, but in terms of, you know, if they have to build a biting path or. Whatever other facilities will, that that will be able to happen. Uh then in terms of your second question, uh truck traffic. Uh with our uh current solids management plan, we will be planning for uh a a flow of truck traffic of a hundred trucks per year. Uh so, you know, it's uh that will be happening probably. Either once or twice a year uh over a two to three week period. So we don't anticipate uh. Outside of those two periods, which there will. Probably be the, you know, five to six trucks a day. Uh we don't anticipate any significant truck traffic coming in and out of the plant.
One more question. The uh solids that you select.
We're going to get a microphone over to.
The solids that you collect and store on site. Is there going to be an odor issue there? If so, I'll buy it.
Yeah.
What's an odor?
Order.
Order, order issues.
No, yes, uh yeah, we we are keenly aware of uh potential odor problems. Uh we will be keeping this in a a covered tank with uh advanced odor control. So we do not anticipate any odors uh from the the solid storage at all.
Questions? Other questions? All right. Going once. This is certainly not your last opportunity. Please, uh we said there's a newsletter that folks can sign up for uh for any uh. Yeah. Updates. Uh so I encourage you to do that and like one one more question.
Just because I don't know, you said that the the effluent pipe will be under the river? I just because I'm obviously not an engineer.
Yeah.
How does how does that work with pressure from the river versus what's way out into the river? I just don't know how that's done.
Yeah.
If you. Angel, Mark Ellison, M A R K E L L I S.
I appreciate the spelling of your name. It's important to have that K. Um. Yeah, uh in terms of, you know, the the pressure from the river, uh. This is something we just love as engineers, but you know, the 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 discharge point is going to be at a a much higher elevation. Uh in the plant than in the river. And so there's there's really no way hydraulically for the water to be pushed back up through that pipe. Uh that, you know. It's like, you know, we put a straw that's uh uh, you know, in a glass of water, it's really if the tip of the straw is not going to start. Spurt that water if it's it's way up here. So there's just no way for that to happen. Did I get, did you have a second part of that question?
Yeah.
Uh and then in terms of uh uh how to keep connecting and engaging, uh uh please, uh. We have both a an email and a phone number. If you're more comfortable, just leave us a voice message. Uh come to our websites. Uh that's where we'll be keeping. Both the uh recording of this uh public hearing as well as the uh final facility plan and uh. Uh formal responses to all of your comments. Uh if. If I uh owed you a specific uh answer and you'd like to be in contact uh with me directly, I've got a card for you, so come and. Come and and grab me and I'd be be happy to 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 create contact with you directly, but we'll also be doing it. Uh formally through the uh public comments uh responses. And then uh we also have some. Cards uh over there that you can grab uh as well as uh forums, if you would prefer to do a written uh comment as well over at the. So. And things.
Do you want to repeat the date?
Oh, yes. Uh so public comment. Thank you, Dr. Action. Public comment will be open uh through January eighteen. Uh so that's uh ten days from now. And then we will be going uh to the council for formal approval in in February uh and submitting to PCA uh before March, which is our funding deadline. So. Peter, do you want to close this out officially?
I sure will. The hockey game is about to start out there, so I'll wrap it up, but I'll say that. Uh, you know, um I've been a member of the council for about five years now and. Um it's getting to learn about these treatment plants is amazing. And certainly touring a treatment plant. This infrastructure that we kind of take for granted, a lot of us take for granted. Um is just so fascinating and occasionally we have opportunities to take a tour. Uh of one of our treatment plants and so hopefully uh if you sign up for these. Uh newsletters and check out our website and you'll see those opportunities and I encourage you to take advantage of them. So you can see it firsthand, all of the work that takes place to keep our waters clean. So with that, um I will close the public hearing and thank you again for joining us today. Really appreciate it. Have a great evening. All right. There we go. That's our.
Our public hearing on site, at least all over, okay? We're watching.